Good afternoon. It was a very gloomy morning, but here comes the sun, so we're happy for that. I'd like to call to order the Hamilton County Commission Staff Meeting of May the 18th. Good afternoon, Madam Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. And we also have our Assistant to the Clerk of the Board and our County Administrator is with us. So we have quite a few items, really important, exciting items to come before us, and I will move straight into the agenda. Well, first item on the agenda is Home, Funded Housing Plans Results, and Update on Housing Assessment. I'm not sure who's going to take the lead, maybe Joy? Okay, all right, Joy, so we're ready for you.
Thank you. I'm here with several representatives of a team that are working on housing plans for individual communities, as well as a housing assessment, or the assessment of affordable housing, and the needs for the county that we're working on that will be completed in the early fall. So I'm going to turn things over to Kristin and to Liz Bloom, and I've got the PowerPoint ready to share my screen.
Great, thanks, Joy. Thank you so much for having us today. My name is Kristin Baker. I'm the Executive Director of LISC, Greater Cincinnati. Many of you probably know my predecessor, Kathy Schwab, who is enjoying retirement, and I have taken her place. But I've been at LISC for 10 years and really happy to talk with you today about the work that LISC and the Community Building Institute have been doing all around Hamilton County. And we're really excited for this partnership and appreciate the opportunity to talk with you a little bit about this work. So I'm joined by Liz Bloom. You're going to hear from her in just a minute. We can go to the next slide, Joy. So what we're going to cover today is, as Joy mentioned, we have been working in a handful of jurisdictions in the county on housing action plans. And we have learned a lot already, just in this, these selection of places, about what's going on in the county with respect to housing that I think you'll find really informative. We'll talk a little bit about what we're going to, what might come out by way of recommendations to these jurisdictions. And then we'll talk a little bit about what role the county might be able to play in addressing housing of all types in the county. So we can move to the next slide, and I'm going to pass it to Liz, who's going to talk through what these housing action plans look like and what we're finding so far. Liz?
Thanks, and can we go to the next slide? Thanks for having us. We really appreciate it, and I want to give a shout out to your planning and community and economic development staff as well. We've really worked together as a big team, and it's been great. It's been really wonderful to work with Joy and Steve and their teams. So I want to talk a little bit about what these housing action plans are all about, and then some findings that we're coming up with. So I think Joy and company did a really smart thing when they started to think about how the county might support housing. They said, what jurisdictions want to be participating? And we're working with five communities who raised their hands. Silverton, Deer Park, Norwood, Cheviot, and Addison all suggested that they wanted to think a little bit more deeply about what they might do more proactively around housing development in general and affordable housing in particular. And so we started with them, and we spent a lot of time in all five of those communities. We interviewed all kinds of folks, realtors, local officials, safety service directors, managers, building inspectors, people who were building housing, people who were moving. And so we really got a sense of what was going on in each local market. And then we wanted to understand more broadly what the housing market was doing. And man, it is such a different housing market than it was even two or three years ago. And there's some really fascinating sort of countervailing trends that I'm going to talk about in a minute. And so in the course of these conversations, what we've realized is that these communities are all their own separate place, and they all have individual objectives, and they all have individual outcomes. But there are certainly some things that countywide, the county can be doing to support them all. And we'll talk about those in a little bit more. I really talking about redevelopment and predevelopment, how we might support their code enforcement work, that sort of stuff. And contrary to popular belief, there are lots of communities that really do want to think about affordable housing and what their affordable housing solutions might look like. I think the county has been also very engaged, and we were greatly appreciative of your CARES Act funding around eviction prevention, and have been an active partner in the Housing Our Future strategy. All of that informs the work that we're doing in these five places. So can we go to the next slide? And just one more. I said, the housing market is so very different than it was five years ago, and maybe even three years ago. There's this very, very tight housing market, and we see crazy appreciation in homeowner product really throughout the county. And I think there are several things that drive that. One of them is a lack of production, a lack of new construction. Another is very low interest rates. You know, and it's really interesting, because I keep thinking, well, these high prices are certainly going to bring existing owners to want to put their house on their market, but it doesn't. It hasn't, and I think that that's largely because those folks don't know what their next move is. So there's sort of this frozen market now, because nobody knows what their next move is. I think that we know that black homeowners in particular are facing more challenges, because the people who are buying new houses are people that are coming with cash and offering 15% or 20% more than the asking price on a house, which is just an amazingly different situation than what's being experienced in places like Deer Park or Silverton or Cheviot six years ago. Kristin is going to talk a little bit about the appreciation. In Norwood, over the last five years, it's been over $100,000 a unit. It's amazing. You could now not buy a two-bedroom in Silverton for less than $200,000. Truly amazing. In addition to single-family home sales, we're also seeing rental market prices go up, because people who might normally be in their first-time home are not having a first-time home, and they're pushing up rental prices. We know that this is really straining the affordable options that we knew were already an issue five years ago, are being strained even more, because in the middle of this market appreciation, we have households who are not working as many hours, not back in the labor force, not sort of recovered from COVID. And so we've got these two things going on at the same price. The other thing that I'll point out is that urban neighborhoods, maybe in Cincinnati or in the urban core, that were at one point owned to lots of households that didn't make a lot of money, those units are gone as well in a lot of places. Tremendous amount of upward pressure and pressure around affordability in the market right now. Again, a very different situation than we were in five years ago. Next slide, please. So some high-level data points for you, and I won't belabor this slide, but we know that about a third of the county population households are cost-burdened. That means they're spending more than 30% of their income on their housing, and half of those households are spending more than 50% of their income on their housing, which means that it's hard to do all the other things they have to do in life, like pay for transportation and school and all healthcare, all the other things they have to do. We know that most of these households are under 65, and most of them are making below $50,000 a year. In some cases, below $20,000 a year. So this is back to this business about how can we have an affordability problem when Hamilton County is such an affordable market? It is an affordable market if you have money. It's not an affordable market if you don't. And you can see the little red box there gives you some detailed cost burden numbers in communities that we're working in. Silverton, Deer Park, if those, any of you have seen the work that Tom Carroll has been doing for Silverton over the last couple of years, you know that these percentage of households who are cost-burdened are increasing at the same time market levels are going up. So it's these sort of countervailing trends, as you will. Next slide, please. So I'm going to let Kristin talk a little bit about the geography of all of this.
Thanks, Liz. You know, if you're a visual person like me, I think it's really helpful to see this map, which is showing us where we are seeing the highest concentrations of households with incomes less than $25,000 a year. And that's 23% of all households in Hamilton County. Now, I think that's really important, because like, as Liz was saying, we know that the cost of housing is going up in the county. We know that there is increased pressure on the market to go upwards, yet people's incomes are not keeping pace with that, right? And so how do we, how do we kind of see where this is concentrating? Where do we know we have the most opportunity to support our neighbors in important ways through housing? And how do we make sure that we're also helping access to employment and all the things that we know really help contribute to increasing families' net worth? So this data also lets us know that over 20,000 of those households in this county were most likely to be behind on their rent or mortgage as of December of 2020. Now, of course, we know that COVID has wreaked more than havoc on our community and on folks who are already experiencing income challenges. But it's just, I think it's an important thing to keep in mind, that we know there are many households that are experiencing crisis, and as the moratoriums lift on evictions and foreclosures in 2021, you know, I think we're going to see some really troubling outcomes if we don't think about how we respond. And again, the county has been a tremendous partner in taking action on that with the resources you've been able to leverage through the CARES funding. So we can go to the next slide, Joy. And this is something that Liz touched on a minute ago, which I think is incredibly fascinating, and I think it is also something that is surprising to these communities as they really see their trends over time, that the single-family median home sales have roughly doubled in Norwood, Silverton, and Cheviot. So how do we respond to that? And what is that, what opportunities does that give us? You know, we would also point out that, in particular, we're going to talk about this shortly, but you know, we're seeing more out-of-town investors and buyers purchasing these single-family homes. So just because the sales prices are increasing does not mean they are continuing to be homeownership opportunities. And that's something that's important to think about, too, as we, as we think about, about the future of housing in the county. Next slide, please. So we are creating these action plans for these jurisdictions to help respond to each local, the conditions that are existing in each of these places that make them unique. As you could see, yes, we are seeing it over, you know, we are seeing trends going up in terms of the prices of housing, but some places it's more drastic and dramatic than others. And when you compare that to, to that cost burden of, you know, how many households are spending more than 30% of their monthly income on their housing? That's how we define the cost burden figure. You could see that Norwood is an example. We, housing prices have gone from a median of 97.5 in 2014 all the way up to 185 in 2020. You see here, we have some very dark purple spots on this map showing that we have a lot of homeowners in the neighborhood or in the community that are severely cost-burdened. So that's really creating challenge. These neighborhoods are, all these jurisdictions are seeing housing markets that are attracting higher-income households, and that's threatening some of the existing naturally occurring affordability that has historically been in, in many of these jurisdictions. Addison would be the one, maybe, that we would flag as not quite seeing that rapid of a change. There's an opportunity to help build the market there, but each of these plans is going to respond to those local needs differently. We can go to the next slide. And so I mentioned this a moment ago. We are seeing a tremendous increase in, in the role of often out-of-town investors via real estate investment trusts, impacting the availability and opportunity for homeownership in the county. So this map is just an example of one of these real estate investment trusts, or REITs, as we call them, called Vinebrook, that has 74 properties just inside of Cheviot. And that impact that that has in a jurisdiction like Cheviot is that now we have 62, we originally had 62% homeowners back in 2000, all the way down to 50% in the most recent assessment. So that's a very significant decline in homeownership. And real estate investment trusts purchase properties that are income-producing. So they are purchasing, they are profiting from, these properties are, you know, the rent that they're charging is enough to allow them to cover their expenses and to make a profit. So this is an investment vehicle that demonstrates that there is, these markets are improving, because they are able to make money on renting these properties. But how is that benefiting our community? How is that bringing benefit to the residents of these jurisdictions is something that we have to be thinking about. And how do we make sure that these properties are in control, under control of a good actor in the market? So we can go to the next slide. So that was a little bit about the data, some of the data. Of course, there's much more in each individual strategy that will be shared once we have, once they have been approved by the various jurisdictions that we're working with. But we do want to give you an example of what some of the recommendations look like that are coming out of that work. So we understand what the conditions are now, and then what does that look like going forward? So the, this is where I want to just spend one second talking about Housing Our Future. I think you all have heard, probably Liz and others, talk about Housing Our Future. This is the community-wide housing strategy that we at LISC and the Greater Cincinnati Foundation have been driving to really bring everyone together to identify a key set of opportunities around how do we really make sure that we are providing housing options in our community that makes sense for the people that are living here right now? So that falls into really three big buckets. One is how do we produce more housing and preserve the existing affordability that we have in our community? How do we protect our most vulnerable residents and seniors in particular from housing insecurity? And then how do we impact the underlying systems that are affecting the ability for folks to access housing and to help create change in the community and set some goals around what kind of production do we need to leverage to get to making sure that everyone has access to the kind and type of housing that they need? So this work is really important to us as LISC, as a CDFI, and as a community development organization in the, in this community, but also we have so many other partners, developers, lots of folks from different jurisdictions in Hamilton County, as Liz mentioned. Some of the professional staff here at the county have been wonderful, really strong, with resources to help us understand what could this look like in the various places that we were working in, Hamilton County. So Liz is going to share now a little bit about what the framework for these recommendations are and what they might look like.
And I'm just going to go to the, so we're understanding housing markets, individual community priorities, and developing action plans. Let's go to the next slide, because I'm mindful of time here, and I want to make sure we can do questions. One of the first things that Kristin mentioned in the framework for Housing Our Future is producing new housing. One of the things that is true about a tight housing market is we're not producing enough housing in all kinds of price points. These suburban jurisdictions in Hamilton County are largely built out, but there are redevelopment opportunities that present themselves. And every one of these communities knows what their redevelopment opportunity is. Largely, they're along their major corridors. They're on Harrison Avenue, they're on Hamilton Avenue, they're on Blue Ash Corridor. These communities all have identified these sites, but they are not assembled, they're not ready. They're, they're often owned by folks who are, who are not participating actively with the local jurisdictions. And in most of these places, what communities want to do in addition to provide redevelopment opportunities is they want to strengthen their local community business districts. Lots of obsolete retail users and underused properties in business districts. And thankfully, these two objectives are connected and mesh. If communities can be redeveloping their business district and adding more households to the mix in those locations, that's, that's a happy, that's a happy connection, right? More people in business districts to shop at restaurants and coffee shops and breweries are connected, a virtuous circle, if you will. I know it's sometimes hard to talk about density and higher density in communities in the suburbs, but in fact, I don't think that has to be a scary thing. I think there are lots of ways that we can talk about density that are very consistent with the character in most of these communities already. Higher-density projects along major corridors support business districts. I think I'm going to use Springfield again, or Silverton again. That's one of our communities. When AG47 went in, the community was supportive. It was a little bit of a walk on the wild side for them, and now everybody loves it, and they want one. It's those kinds of projects in, density in the appropriate location. Doesn't mean everything is going to be high-density. It means we're going to focus on site prep in places where they want more activity. Redevelopment that connects to the existing infrastructure is also in lots of obsolete places exactly what we need. I will also tell you that this is a recommendation consistent with the SEDS. The SEDS, which was an economic development document, said exactly the same thing. We need to redevelop our obsolete locations with contemporary land use, which includes housing, includes mixed uses, and it includes retail, not a lot of retail. So supporting predevelopment and catalytic sites, which includes help with site acquisition, help with grant writing, help with infrastructure improvements, all of those things to get obsolete uses ready for redevelopment, I think is really important. And in a lot of these small jurisdictions, folks need the capacity and the support and capacity ways to do that. That might be donating, that might be redevelopment incentives, that might be grant writing. All of those are places that I think county can be supportive of individual jurisdictions in the ways they want to be successful, but they are having a hard time from a capacity standpoint. Support critical infrastructure, some of these communities. So in Deer Park, they just, they're, I don't know if it's finished yet, but they've been working on the streets and sidewalk along the Blue Ash Corridor. That's a principal location for them. They really want to maximize that infrastructure improvement to create a reuse plan that will include housing and retail use. Cheviot is the same. They've been in conversation with ODOT for a number of years. They're anxious to get started on pedestrian safety improvements and slowing down traffic on Harrison that will do things that will increase the use of the commercial uses in the corridor. So all of these things build on each other. The other thing I will say, I think I got to go to the next slide. I think I have one more slide. I'm going to try and be quick. So one of the other ways I want to talk about density for just a little minute, in addition to higher-density projects on major corridors, is that the suburban communities in Hamilton County are full of two-family and three-family and four-family units, in some cases, family units. I think in years past, we had a tendency to look at those buildings as obsolete buildings, but in point of fact, they are affordable housing that already exists in all these communities. And when these buildings are in good shape, they're great neighbors, and they're great affordable housing. When they're in bad shape, we look at them and say they're obsolete. And one of the things that we've had conversations with all of these jurisdictions about is thinking differently about that product type, and thinking about how to hold on to those units and improve those units so that they're good neighbors and good housing. The other couple of things I will mention quickly are that, again, this overall capacity that the county might be supportive on, zoning codes and code enforcement, this is stuff that hasn't been looked at in a lot of cases in a lot of communities for a very long time. Making sure that, in particularly those redevelopment locations where they need to maximize uses, that they're zoned appropriately. And these might be school locations, they might be obsolete vacant church locations in addition to business districts, and making sure that communities are conscious about what's the appropriate zoning and how do they signal to developers what they want and what they don't want. And their zoning code is an powerful way to do that. The other is code enforcement support. This is not very sexy, but it is really important. The map that Kristin showed about all the REIT sales, boy, that changes the game entirely. When Cheviot flips from a majority homeowner community to a majority renter community, it's a whole new game, right? When you do code enforcement with these big REITs, it can be really hard to get their attention and to get compliance. One of the ways, and I think the county has been doing this and thinking about this, is try and, Silverton is having the same problems as Colrain Township. They're the same owners that are causing problems. If you can have multiple communities supportive, the county working to enforce code violations, hopefully compliance improves and modernizing. So I think that, I think that, I want to be conscious not to take up too much time. That's the nature of the recommendations. There are very local recommendations, and there are important, I think, county-wide strategies that are really going to help these communities succeed. And I'm going to stop there.
Yep, so I have one last slide, if we want to move to that, Joy. So the, so what we discovered is that as we're working through these individual jurisdiction strategies, like Liz said, there are definitely opportunities for the county government to play an important role in supporting these jurisdictions. So the work that we are also doing in tandem with these strategies is working with, with the county on identifying some gaps. Where are there opportunities for us to build together around the strategies that are in Housing Our Future? And which ones are most salient for the county to pursue? How do we maximize the resources that come from federal government to help create more balance in the market? How do we work with those jurisdictions to create some models that really can help demonstrate success? And how to really encourage affordability for all county residents to, again, meet folks where they are and make sure that we have income, housing that makes sense for the incomes of the residents that are in our community? So the last slide we have here is just to show you sort of where we are in the timeline. Joy, if you want to go to the last one. So we are working through right now all the recommendations that were included in Housing Our Future. There's over 100, and determining which are most relevant, again, to the role of the county to play. And you could see that our end goal is to have recommendations for you to come back in September with a final document.
Okay, thank you very much. Lots of great information, lots of great work that has been done. Steve, I saw you popped in. Did you want to add anything or say anything?
No, I think Kristin covered it quite well. It's just to say that the administration is working closely with us in community planning and community development, and then in hand with LISC and CBI to come up with those county-wide recommendations. You know, you get this little local snapshot of five jurisdictions work. We really want an overall county plan, and we know that you guys, the commission has asked the administration and then on down to us to get those recommendations to you. And we wanted to go through a methodical process that includes stakeholders. You probably saw that one item on the schedule where we're going to take the month of July to really reach out to folks who have a stake in housing, you know, the production folks, the advocates, just so that we know we're on the right path. And things are starting to bubble up. You know, there were 101 recommendations out of Housing Our Future, so a lot for us to review. But there's some that just don't make much sense for county government. Some are more city-focused, some might be more aspirational almost. And so we're really drilling down to maybe those top 10, top 20 things that really apply to the county so we can get to work as fast as possible, once those recommendations come to you in September.
Thank you. I'm sure my colleagues may have some questions, but that was going to be one of my questions. When you bring your recommendations in September, then does LISC proceed to maybe work with five additional communities? Or is that how that works?
We actually have, we have one more community on the, on the schedule, which is Springfield Township, who are later this summer, and then we have another round of funding. With the flexibility of the CARES waivers from HUD, we're able to spend some more home admin funding to do $100,000 for six more plans. And we will, once again, ask people to apply, and we will have scoring. If we need to, we'll score and use our advisory committee to help us select. But last year, we had six communities raise their hands, and we were able to fund all of them. So we'll, we'll do our best to keep, keep things moving and work with the folks that are ready to move. So, thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, for me, Liz was on there, and she mentioned about we're in the middle of a frozen market. And so Liz, I was going to ask you, of course, the pandemic is influential in this process, but were we at that point before the pandemic, or did the pandemic exasperate the market?
That's a really good question. I've been puzzling about this stuff all the way through this process. I think it was starting. I think, I think certainly COVID exacerbated the situation, but I think these trends were starting before. I think really low interest rates were part of the Fed's response to COVID. So that like sort of compounded what was happening. But we never, in Hamilton County or this region, we haven't produced in one year as many housing units since 2007, which is like pre-last recession. We've never produced as many units as we did that year for the rest of time. So this slowing of production started with the last recession, and the construction industry never really responded. And so it's, it's been building, and then I think it really came to a head when the Fed froze interest rates. I mean, sort of all of that happened all at the same time.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, okay, thank you. Uh, Vice President Reese, did you have any comments or questions?
Uh, actually I do. Uh, thank you, thank you for the presentation and, uh, good to see some familiar faces again. Liz, good to see you and Kristen, uh, good to see you as well. Um, I, I just, I think taking one step back as people are watching us and, uh, certainly the word has been affordable housing now. Those are the words, you know? Um, and affordable housing means a lot of different things to a lot of different people. Because, um, certainly if you are, you know, almost destitute, uh, then, you know, the government says, hey, we, we're working on affordable housing. Um, and then obviously if you, you know, are super rich, you can buy up a whole lot of property right now, which, you know, we're seeing out of town folks as well as local people being able to, to buy. Uh, but it's this whole group in the middle, um, who have, are in various phases of the middle, who cannot afford to, uh, to rent or to even live, uh, in Hamilton County. Now, all of us are elected countywide. So I know that the city has its own CDVG and their own plan in Cincinnati. Uh, but we also are elected by people who live in Cincinnati as well. And what they do does impact other areas. I know I talked with, uh, some folks from the first suburbs and so they're starting to see people being kind of pushed out into other areas because you can't afford to live in some of these areas. I just couldn't believe, uh, Evingston had homes four hundred thousand dollars. You know, I went to Withrow, I mean, and you know, you just can't afford to live. So it's kind of pushing people out. Um, and then it's also going outward. So, um, one of the things I would like, I know that you have your five areas that you're gonna report on, but I think what would be helpful, um, for us, um, at least I know for myself, Madam President, I'd like to see, and I know, uh, I think Steve just mentioned it. We need this overall to see a, a total picture of what, what does the housing look like in Hamilton County? And then have maybe an interactive map that's it, cause it continuously changes so that as we make decisions on a CRA here or, uh, a breakover here or as, as a municipality, one of our forty-nine municipalities makes a decision on an abatement over there, uh, which causes, uh, harm to maybe someone who's had a house, senior citizen who has a house and now the taxes is higher than the house because the assessment, they get no abatement. Um, and I don't think we can look at it, uh, at least it doesn't help me. It's hard for me to look at it in a vacuum of, okay, these five areas and, okay, now let's see what's going on in the city. Over here, Evanston's doing this, but how did it affect Bonheal? And it just seemed like we're getting attacked all over. Um, and one of my constituents, uh, Tracy Dillingham, she couldn't be with us today because she's, uh, at work. Uh, but she wanted me to, you know, ask this question. She has a, uh, a son who is working and, uh, it's time for him to get out the house now. You know, he's, he's graduated and ready to go, but can't find, uh, a, affordable place to rent. And it has been frustrating for her, uh, to, you know, as a mom, trying to make sure he has somewhere safe, but also, you know, decent. And, uh, he just doesn't make enough. He's working two jobs and going to school and he can't find affordable housing. Or, uh, we had a Xavier professor on, um, Madam President had her come on and do a presentation and she talked about students that were homeless living in a car. Uh, and so I think having a total vision roadmap with all of the things that you talked about that affects this and then really get a grip on Hamilton County. What do we really look like, um, in the mix of this? Um, and then also adding in, I had read somewhere where millennials more so now, they're, they're not looking to, um, buy like, you know, the, the boomers. You know, they want, they want to rent. They don't wanna, you know, they don't want to fix anything. I don't blame them, that's how, oh, if they want to be able to call the maintenance guy and they go fix it. So are we providing housing, um, that is for the future? What is the future thoughts of the next group of people that will be, um, you know, our age? And then I wanted to also ask about community trust. I know we talked about the out of town trust, uh, but I was on a, um, a statewide, um, a, a statewide conference by The Realist. Uh, and it was called, uh, The State of Housing in Black America. And in your slide, I saw where you said one of the barriers for, you know, African-American homeownership was, you know, going, going down. Um, one of the things they're doing in Columbus, I'm researching it, but certainly you all probably know more about it, that I want to see if this is something we should look at, is called Community Trust. So that the communities can kind of, can, you know, have some ownership in their neighborhoods, uh, and in their villages and their township. So I don't know if that was one of the recommendations, but I wanted to, uh, ask you about that and then also ask you about the code enforcements. I'm glad you brought that up because in some cases, certainly we want the places to look nice. We want homes to be looking great, but sometimes we put these code enforcements and the people, we run people out of their homes. Uh, they barely can pay the, the mortgage and then here we come talking about beautification. And then all of a sudden, they send in the building inspectors. Uh, well, no, they tell me they get a call from a developer first. Will you like to sell your house? We want your house. And then if you say no, forty-eight hours later, here come the building inspectors. Uh, they said this on this, uh, this conference I was on and also know, uh, some people that it actually happened to. Uh, so I would like to have that in our report too. The relationship between the building inspectors and the developers, uh, which has really kind of bullied some people out of their homes, uh, through code of code violations. So maybe those are the things that I wanted to put on the table, uh, Madam President, as we get the full presentation. Um, and these are things that I have heard, uh, experienced from people who've told me this. Um, and so I wanted to make sure that those were brought to the table. But I think community trust is something that grabbed my attention and I don't know if that's something that we should be looking into.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Um, and also Liz, I don't know if you were a part of that presentation at the first suburbs when, uh, the city manager, what, what's his name again? Uh, he did a complete housing comprehensive.
From Silverton, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's done some really great research. It's really wonderful.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful if we could get that report again. Um, um, it just was really astounding to me, some of the things that are going on. We know what's going on, but to actually have the data for the whole county, I thought was, was really a good thing. Uh, and it would be great to get a copy of that. Um, Commissioner Drehouse.
Yeah, I have a very basic question for, I guess, Jeff Aludo. Um, so thank you ladies for the presentation, very helpful. It's always good to see you. Um, but you know, we are embarking on, um, a new, uh, you know, new look at housing strategies countywide uh, in a way that will be, I hope, forward-thinking and, and comprehensive. Are, how do these two things fold together? I, I'm, I'm confused as to the efforts that we're going to embark on here within the next month or two and related to your knowledge, your stats, your, all the work that you've done and how they interface with one another.
Yeah, Commissioner, so I think, um, the, the broader county plan relates to what Steve had mentioned, um, in, in his wrap-up comments a little bit earlier. So we have these, uh, various community housing plans that are being done, but the board had chartered the administration on an effort to look at a broader view of what can the county do to most effectively on a countywide basis, uh, play, uh, its, its most impactful role and facilitate affordable housing, um, at, at its level, right? So, um, in so, in doing that, um, community develop, community development, community planning has been our lead entity on that. And so they are reviewing, uh, all of the recommendations of the Housing Our Future Plan and other, uh, best practice recommendations. Uh, and talking with, as Steve said, with stakeholders, et cetera. And there'll be more stakeholder involvement over the coming months, uh, to get back to, so that we can get back to the board, uh, with a recommendation on what of all of the best practices for maintaining a viable system of affordable housing in all of its, in all of its different forms? What are the best things that the county can do to play into that? So that is, that is exactly what we are proceeding with, that we should have something for the board probably by, um, end of third quarter. I think Steve was mentioning September on September. Uh, so that's what we're shooting for there. But, uh, does that answer your question, Commissioner?
Yeah, I was just confused. I was like, wait, is this that or is this part of that?
Good question. So we have, we have, um, smaller individual community housing plans going on at the same time.
Okay.
That the housing or that the county is developing this overarching recommendation for the board um, on, uh, you know, communities are all, the communities, you know, have the responsibility, the individual political subdivisions, uh, to do their housing planning individually. They're always going to do that. So then the question becomes, how does the county help facilitate all of that from its level? And that's going to be the broad recommendations you get later on this year.
Yeah, that's kind of what I'm looking for is that nexus there is, you know, all three of the county commissioners have said we're, uh, really interested in prioritizing housing um, as a strategy to help residents and promote economic development in neighborhoods. Um, how did all, how do all these things fold together? Because what you have just presented to us is tremendously helpful, um, by way of, uh, forming our information base. And so I just wanted to make sure that, um, obviously we're working with you guys, but I just wasn't sure what the intersection was. So Jeff.
These, these things all mesh together perfectly.
Yeah, that's great. And the timing, and the timing's great too. Um, as we look to some of these communities to kind of lead the way, um, in the county. And Joy, I know you've been interacting with these, these folks, but, um, Silverton's the best example I also can think of, uh, was a community that's really taking a hard look at this and has some significant challenges. Um, so one other thing I just wanted to add and, and I'll look, really look forward to, to all of that work kind of culminating so that we ha- as policymakers have a better understanding of our role and our ability to help out, right? And, and where, how do we do it? And in conjunction with the city, who's also embarking on a, a similar, um, housing study. So, uh, the one thing that strikes me about your report and you, you said a lot of stuff that I think was really important. The one thing is related to communities, um, kind of, uh, being their own best advocates and knowing about the zoning in their community, knowing about the resources in their community, the partnerships in their community. It reminds me of CDCs in the city where you do have that entity that reaches out, partners, informs and then pushes and builds, um, in these local communities. Walnut Hills comes to mind. Um, and I know some of these, um, outlying areas outside the city have, uh, entities similar to that, but I don't know how many there are. And I wonder if, I, I just throw it out there, something to think through as we partner with these communities, Shaviet, you know, Norwood, all these communities, um, and understanding the value of having something that acts and looks like a CDC. Uh, and maybe there's something at the county level where we, um, kind of, if a community is not able to develop that on their own, or they just don't have the resources or the time in some cases, then the county serves as kind of that, um, that arm for them. And we act like a CDC, uh, in doing, uh, kind of innovative and catalytic stuff in these local communities. So I just want to throw that out and piggybacking on what you said about the importance of these local community, really advocating for themselves and understanding their communities better than any of the rest of us. So just want to put that out there as, um, an idea as we continue to go down this road.
Thank you. And I think about the different groups that are working toward affordable housing, um, how you guys are doing it. I think about President, CEO Greg Johnson, who came in from CMHA and what he's doing and just trying to attack it from, from different angles. Um, and, and Joy probably knows better than me, but I know Lincoln Heights finally got a CDC. Um, they didn't have it when I was there, uh, but they have it now. So hopefully that'll help as they work with Port Authority and other entities to, to bring in housing. So, okay, well, I thank all of you for all your work. Looking forward to, to seeing you back. Uh, yes, and Arthur, go ahead.
Madam President, just can I ask, as we're, um, wrapping this piece up? And I know what, based on what, um, Commissioner Drehouse yourself and, uh, Jeff and myself have said, is it possible, I know we said fourth quarter, I just want to make sure when we come back in the fourth quarter, um, probably have enough time for it, but that all of those entities are at the table. This, this presentation is included to what, you know, what the bigger picture is. Obviously there's a limitation of what we're going to be able to do, but I think we need to see the big picture, you know, what is happening, uh, whether it's in Cincinnati or whether it's, you know, in the villages, uh, or the townships. And also having, um, the, uh, President Dumas just mentioned, having, make sure CMHA, Greg Johnson as well. We need a real total picture of what everyone else is doing, um, and then what's really out there. And so I just want to make sure that that's really clear, that that needs to be included instead of us have, making sure that we're not just in a silo ourselves.
Right, the, the schedule includes extensive, um, engagement with the Housing Our Future Steering Committee, which includes representatives from all of the organizations you've mentioned, um, as well as the communities, the cities, villages and townships that we'll be, um, working with. So we have a very robust schedule. This was a preview for some sort of, this is what we know right now. And we engaged Kristen and Liz and their teams, um, and kind of added on to their original contract to help us with the countywide assessment. So we're keeping them busy, I promise. And, and getting, and, and, and people now say, you know, you want to do some housing, call the county, see what's going on in the county. So it's a, it's, it's a good, um, a good place for us to be in. And we're, are happy to be bringing back a draft that will come, uh, by September. And then we'll continue to plug away at this.
Okay.
Madam President, can I ask another question? Um, it was mentioned, uh, that the private sector has a role to play here. And, uh, sometimes it's a good role and sometimes it's not so good. Uh, when we've got property owners who are especially are out of town property owners that are not diligent about maintenance, uh, for the buildings that they own. Um, so is there, I, I wonder what we're doing, um, in, in attempt to bring in some private sector, not only landlords, but, uh, business owners. As you say, there's a tremendous impact to the business district here. Um, so i- is there an opportunity to engage the private sector as well?
We've interviewed all sorts of folks from the private sector as we've gone through these, um, housing strategies for very much that reason, who's doing what, what can we be helpful on, all of that. Um, and it's really helpful. It definitely informs the process.
Okay.
They're also included in the Housing Our Future, um, executive, you know, steering committee and advisory roles. You know, the Greater Cincinnati Apartment Association, Home Builders Association, the lenders. But yeah, we can definitely make sure we're including broader business district folks with the outreach that we're doing with the communities, so.
Yeah, maybe some other merchants groups, something like that.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for all your hard work.
Thank you so much for having us.
Uh-huh. So we'll go to item number two, um, which is We Must Save Us, a comprehensive update closing the health gap. Uh, President, CEO Renee Mahaffey-Harris.
Hello, everyone. Good morning, Adam Dumas, Dumas and Vice President Reese and Commissioner Drehouse. Thank you so much for inviting me today. I am supposed to be sharing my slide with you, so I'm going to attempt to do that. I don't do that well often, so let's see if I can do this right this time.
Okay.
All right, so let me, I think I have to hit share. And, oops.
I don't want to see your emails.
Yeah. I don't know what I just did with the document that I just pulled up, oh, boy. Um, yeah, that's not what I want to do. Oh, my goodness, what did I just do with the document? Oh, boy. Um, huh, Bridgette, let's see.
Is it up on the screen, Renee, on that?
Yeah, it isn't.
Renee, I can share if you'd like.
Well, if you don't mind, I don't, I shared it, it might be behind this document. It may be bef- no, because I just shared it, but I don't know where it went. Yes, Bridgette, if you could share, that would be great. So thank you for, uh, giving me the opportunity, just give you an update on what has been accomplished um, with We Must Save Us, um, since, um, I'm going to go back a little further than December, but just to give you an idea of what has been accomplished. Bridgette, can you turn it to presentation slide? Does that work? No. Hold on one second. Okay. There we go. Got it. Whoops. All right, well, you already know this data about where we stand. Um, this is a little off, but from our. Um, this is a little off, but from our Region Six meeting today, I see that I've learned that we're at a negative four point nine percent as it relates to the differential for the black population versus the overall majority population as it relates to the vaccine. Next slide, please.
Sorry about that. I got a lot of screens going on.
Oh, no. Thank you for doing that. I don't know what I did wrong on my end. So.
We might not be in presentation mode, but that's okay.
Okay, no problem. So the first thing I wanted to share was just looking at uh, the virtual town hall series that is aired on not only um, Facebook Live and Zoom, but also on YouTube. Um, you see that from Facebook Live views since April twenty twenty of last year, we have had over forty-three thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight people view. By Zoom, one thousand one hundred and fifty-five and through our COVID page, five thousand one hundred and eight. Next slide, please. The COVID nineteen Community Resources dot com site, which was launched on March twenty-third of twenty twenty. Um, this data is from April twenty twenty to today. Shows you that we've had over twenty-seven thousand unique visitors and page views of over fifty-five, fifty-five thousand. Next slide, please. So some of the specific resources that can be found within the COVID nineteen Community Resources dot com are, you know, Ask the Doctor, which has turned from Ask the Doctor from COVID nineteen of last year to now Ask the Doctor About the Vaccine. Um, as well as where you can find all the vaccine locations, including previously Test and Protect. Um, testing sites, now Test and Protect Vaccine Sites. Um, next slide, please. We've also had weekly contributions to Radio One from the Cincinnati Medical Association on the COVID nineteen and now the vaccine. Next slide. Of course, the campaign that was made possible by the County CARES Act dollars um, had reached over nineteen million people over five weeks with spots on all of the stations as well as cable. Um, and with a designed Spanish version of the commercial on two cable networks that were, that are Spanish speaking only. Next slide, please. Um, so again, billboards, um, since um, January. Um, and you know, our hope is to be able to continue this campaign. Um, as you, you know, contemplate other resources to the Health Collaborative that we are part of that, I guess, request. Um, that we would be able to continue the messages and build out those messages about why get vaccinated. Get vaccinated for her, um, as you can see here. And then we have other versions that we will like to be able to air on, on um, social media that really gets people to understand this is about an effort for all of us to help save each of us by getting the vaccine. Next slide, please. Um, for the state of Ohio or with the state of Ohio, Ohio Department of Health asked us to work with them to create a Train the Trainer curriculum and a Train the Trainer toolkit that would provide information from what the process is and how we started with creation of the vaccine to description of all three vaccines, to frequently ask questions that um, evolved from the work and our research that we conducted. Again, as a result of funding from you, from the County CARES Act dollars. Um, this toolkit has now been converted into, next slide. A brochure handout that really makes it simple to get the facts about COVID nineteen vaccine. What we now know and what you all know as well from, I think, the briefings that Commissioner Dreehouse does on a weekly basis is that we've begun to hear that the folks who wanted the vaccine have gotten the vaccine. So now it's about making it easily accessible to everyone in places where we already are going. Um, but we also want to inform the conversation. Um, and so this brochure is really designed to kind of look at some of the myths and facts that we hear on town halls that are shared um, by radio and um, through other networks. So that we can at least answer the questions and so that we can begin a different dialogue um, as people contemplate and deliberate on taking the vaccine. Next slide, please. We also were able to launch a black physician video with local black physicians. Um, really urging and explaining, you know, why the vaccine. Um, in addition to that, they wrote a letter to the community that is been disseminated through more, more media and social media, but now we are targeting the zip codes based on the data that we received from Region Six um, partners to enable us to really target those communities where we're, we're seeing the lower vaccination rates with this letter that was written to them by over fifty-five black physicians in this region. Next slide, please. And the support groups that we were able to conduct in December and I guess, late November, we are, we're reactivating those support groups. Cause what we found um, through either survey work we've been doing at CMHA buildings uh, to other community um, outreach efforts that we are making to really understand where people are during this time. People need more ways to talk in a collective setting with a mental health provider providing direction to navigate the various challenges that we're all experiencing and just this mood and, and how to move forward and how to kind of get back to our joy. Uh, next slide, please. And so next quarter, we will be planning to conduct some revised uh, work so that we could better understand the quantitative outcomes and, and understand what people are feeling and what they need as we move into the summer months and fall as you know, now we have twelve-year-olds up to twelve and above can get the vaccine. We want to reassess the vaccine intent, attitudes and concerns among Hamilton County black and brown residents. We want to have targeted zip code mailers and canvassing using the brochure. We want to continue to grow the support groups based upon the need. And that is for black and brown communities um, as a whole in this county. And then we also want to distribute, um, have a plan for distribution of a Spanish translated toolkit in conjunction with LULAC to really understand and, and meet our Hispanic brothers and sisters where they are relative to the barriers that are different. Um, and so that is something that we've actually seen over the past few months. That, that targeted strategy must be built by our Spanish-speaking brothers and sisters. And, and it must look different than many of the other campaigns that you see that I've shared today. Also, we will continue our bi-weekly town halls on COVID nineteen um, and provide information and messaging that is proving, I think, to be effective in building a different conversation and helping inform and help people really get the information and understand that this whole time is about how we work together. Next slide. Then in addition to We Must Save Us, I wanted to give you an update on the Caregivers. Um, award that um, we was, was uh, I guess, approved a few months ago. I just wanted to let you know where we are. So um, our first steps, because this is, you know, there's been some times since, since this actually was presented. We wanted to do a, an additional literature review on where the caregiver data stands, and that's what we're doing currently. We're also conducting research among medical professionals with patients. Um, with who, who have patients with caregivers as well as uh, community excerpts and identifying partners, including doctors and practices for referrals. And then working on partnership agreements with a host of organizations um, who support caregiver needs. Um, as well as developing our recruit, recruitment criteria as we really reassessed what the needs are. And those needs look a little different because of COVID nineteen and because of the time we're in. Not a lot, but we just want to make sure that we are targeting the curriculum to meet the needs of caregivers in our community as they look today, as it looks today. We want to set program, program goals, evaluation and staying connected with the guidelines that we have established to achieve the goals. Um, our neighborhood cohorts will be in seven targeted communities of um, Hamilton County. We will begin our pilot with twelve residents in midsummer. Um, with the six additional sites um, targeted so that we can then implement and learn from our pilot and begin to really educate and empower our caregivers who look different, a little different now because of COVID nineteen, but not a lot. But some of the barriers are different because of COVID nineteen. Uh, we also want to determine, determine the number of residents um, to be in each cohort. Um, in our curriculum and development, we want to look at the tools. We want to identify and interview and train materials for both the facilitators and speakers as well as begin our partnership training. So all of that work is underway now. Um, and you know, we look forward to things opening up a little more. Um, some of these conversations are best achieved in person. Um, and so that really is um, our goal is to have these be in person. But if we have to use Zoom, we will. It just does not necessarily achieve the same kind of support and um, you know, kind of camaraderie that happens when you're in a space together and can look at one another face to face. So we will see where uh, the health orders and where times take us over the next few months. And that's my update. Any questions?
Commissioner, Commissioner.
Thank you so much, Renee. Um, you, there's no denying that there was a gap as it relates to who was getting tested, vaccination availability. Um, black and brown people, there was definitely a gap and you filled that gap. Um, and so not only that, you impacted so many people and looking at the numbers that you're bringing forth. And I'm also, I had a question here. You answered the question as far as future work and what you plan on doing and the necessity of continuing that. Cause we're not finished. There's still people that are, are, are lost and um, closing the health gap, wow, that, that fits uh, very well. And so I thank you so much for your work and um, what you're going to continue to do and the numbers that you've reached um, is just really awesome. So I'm going to open it up uh, for Vice President Reese. If you have any questions or comments.
Uh, thank you. And uh, thank you, Renee, for the update, uh, presentation. And um, I appreciate, I think, the um, overarching message is that these health disparities unfortunately did not begin with COVID. They were exacerbated with COVID, but, and they won't end with COVID unless we begin to continue to tackle these things in a more permanent way. So I do thank, uh, thank you for your work on um, the issue as relates to COVID. And we still got a lot of work to do there. Um, continue to do that type of work. But also the fact that um, we're also looking at these other, what are the other things? You know, would, why are you hesitant? Um, being able to get that research, um, talking directly to um, to the person, to the community, to the black and brown community. So um, I think that is really good, getting that kind of feedback, what works, what doesn't work. What reaches them, what does not reach them. Um, and um, as said before, we gotta throw everything we can at it. So um, I just want to thank you again. The other thing, though, I would like to maybe in the future, be able to um, you know, hear or see some of the commercials. Uh, I did see one or two of the billboards and just kind of seeing, I don't know, I know the city has something going and that might be separate from us. I have been able to see the, the town halls. I think that's separate.
So the town halls are not specific to the city of Cincinnati. They are actually broadcast across the state. I mean, but they really, the majority of people that watch are from the county. They are. It, it, I think you may be, have a perception that it's the city because there is a council member who wasn't a council member when we started the town halls. Um, and.
I was talking about, I was trying to figure out the part that what did we, what did our dollars go toward?
Your dollars went to launching the We Must Save Us campaign. So that campaign would not exist without the funding from um, the county.
Yeah. So that's what I was talking about, the parts that we are contributing to. Being able to, like, we just did something with um, the, the CBB and we put money toward that. And we, they rolled out, here's the ad, here's what it looks like. And you have ads and I'm saying, oh, great for us to see some of those and we can be, even put it on our website, some of the ads.
Bridgette, I think has all of the ads. I mean, you may not have the updated billboards, but you have the commercial that launched in December. Um, and, and it.
Oh, I wasn't there in December.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry.
I was just saying, if there was, if there were the ads, we got a new, we have a website now that we didn't have in December. Uh, called five-one-three-relief.org. And whenever we're doing something new or whatever, we add those. And I, my, my point and my question, uh, if I could finish it. My, my point and question was the part that we're funding, which were TV spots, from what I'm hearing. We have TV spots and maybe radio spots. If those were some ads, we might be able to add those to our five-one-three-relief.org. You know, we got a page, we showcase some of the ads that we have. Um, and that might be something that we can push out also a, a little bit more. So that's why I was asking which part, what did we do? And if it's something that we did, maybe it's something we could add, Bridgette could add to our uh, our website that we have and, and continuously push it out. That's what I was asking.
Okay, no, I, and thank you for reminding me that you were not there in December. And I do apologize for interrupting you, but I was like, okay, that's right. You weren't there. Um, but um, so you know, this campaign is a result of the county's CARES Act dollars. And it has enabled us to have a campaign that transcends the city line. Um, and it really reaches everyone across this region around these very important issues. But I will definitely make sure that we provide Bridgette the updated, I mean, the, the commercial. We do, we, we would love to and are working on updates and additions. But again, we were waiting for some funding decisions that, um, that we, you know, we don't want to be ahead of those um, in order to make sure that, um, you know, those reimbursements can occur. And so we do plan to revise the commercial with a more focus on the conversation as it is today, which is more deliberation um, around the vaccine. And she, and that conversation has changed. We um, look forward to, you know, sharing all of those materials uh, with Bridgette so that they can be on your five-one-three-relief site. Um, as well as I think we already currently direct, your, your site directs back to, back and forth between us on the COVID nineteen Community Resources dot com site. But we will definitely make sure that you get everything you need that is available today. And we are, you know, waiting in the wings to be able to update the commercials, the radio, the billboards to reflect the conversation that we're in today. So we can move people from vaccine deliberation to actually getting the vaccine.
Well, that'd be Jeff, Jeff. Did we pass that? I thought we did. So, yeah.
And Renee, um, I was just thinking, were, were you done, Vice President Reese?
Yeah, I think Jeff's gonna respond to that. I, I said, I, I hope we get them what they need, cause we definitely need this messaging out.
Yeah, so now you.
I just wanted to comment um, that Renee, we don't want, you know, any roadblocks in the way to move forward because we're on a really good momentum right now. We certainly want, don't want to stop in the, in the middle of that happening. So Jeff, proceed.
Yeah, so I think Renee, you're referring to the, the agreement with the, the Health Collaborative. Agreement, yeah. So we are uh, finalizing that agreement. We've gone back, uh, back and forth with the Health Collaborative a couple of times to make sure that uh, the agreement uh, is one that we can recommend to the board. I think we're getting to that point now. Um, there is, there, there is that uh, advertisement component and subcontracting component with the health gap in there. So that's part of this. Uh, but we didn't want to come back to the board with an agreement till we could adequately tell the board this is something we can uh, that we can recommend. So we've been going back and forth with the uh, Health Collaborative a couple of times on this, but I think we're getting very close to have something for you shortly here.
Well, thank you for that update. I, by all means, was not pushing on you just to let you know that we really want to continue the work and, and um, you know, definitely make sure that we're optimizing all the sites that are getting information to our community. So I really thank you and um, look forward to continuing to work together to address this time that we're in and, and, and get that number from a negative four point nine to positive. And, and make sure that the rates of vaccination that are happening for black and brown people move in the direction that we all want.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yeah, um, thanks, Renee, for the update. Appreciate it. Um, yeah, this is obviously still a priority uh, for us. We, we saw the health gap playing out. Um, obviously wanted to partner with you to try to close the gap. And we still have some work to do. So thank you for what you've been doing, both on the testing side and the vaccine side. Um, so I, you know, even more to come uh, related to the partnership. But I, I do want to acknowledge that you've been in the field trying to help uh, broaden the message and encourage people to get vaccinated in, in all of the communities, especially the black community and the Hispanic community. So uh, really grateful for the work you're doing.
Thank you. Well, thank you all. And um, we look forward to keep, keeping it, keeping it going. So, thank you.
So do we need to put a fire under anybody, Jeff? Or, you know, we, we keep taking it back and forth to the Health Collaborative. And I know they have monies that are already, you know, allocated to them, but I don't want people work, working. And I know Renee, she'll be working, you know, eve- even though it hasn't been approved yet. So is there anything uh, we need to do to? Uh, you said it kept going back and forth, so.
No, no, nothing, nothing the board needs to do. It just needs to be finalized. And we wanted to make sure that uh, the program language in that agreement is something that is defined enough to, so that we can, uh, so that it's transparent, that it's accountable, that we have um, adequate metrics and that we can tell the board this is exactly what you're getting for those dollars. And don't want to bring something back to you until it's, until that point. until that point is ready. But I think we're really close on it and should be back with you shortly.
Okay. All right, thank you, thank you Renee for all you do.
Thank you all, Commissioner Reese and Commissioner Dreyhouse and Commissioner Dumas, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, let's move forward to item three. Item three is our county treasurer's public policy on delinquent property taxpayers in Hamilton County during the pandemic. We have our Hamilton County Treasurer, Mr. Charlie Wimburn is waiting for his presentation. Welcome sir.
Well, how's everyone doing?
Doing great. I see, I see they fixed your lighting.
Oh, I look like I'm somebody now, you know? First of all, I work for you all, glad to be here with you. Let me thank Madam President, thank you Madam President, the Honorable Vice President Reese and the Honorable Denise Threehouse Commissioner. I was just telling Glenn in the back, Denise, that your mother Clara and I worked together and I tell you, you got a fine mother, had a fine father and I, I enjoyed working in that Democratic office at one time.
Now tell her you said hello.
We tell her, send her my love and appreciation. I tell you, it's gonna be really hard coming after these two dynamic women, but I, I promise you that I will only take about fifteen, ten, fifteen minutes at the most. And Madam, uh, uh, Dumas, Madam President, I want to thank you just for the opportunity to just kind of work with you over the last four or five weeks and, and just thank you just for being so kind to at least listen to me. I know I have a tendency to, to worry folk a little bit, but nevertheless, you've been very kind to me.
Thank you sir.
So what I'd like to do, hopefully all of you I have received by now my white paper, you should have received the package from one of my wonderful staff persons, Chris James should have delivered it to you, along with, uh, you got the white paper plus the guiding, the guiding, I don't know if you want to call it, the guides around property tax that you're able to do it, you should have that. And then now I'm going to take you all hopefully through a, a PowerPoint. So if we can walk you through the PowerPoint presentation, if you give me one second here, I got Glenn to help me out. So hopefully you all did receive my white paper, is that correct everyone?
Correct.
And, and let me just thank you all staff, Bishop Bobby Hilton and Quentin, y'all just do great work and all of y'all and thank you for your leadership. By the way, I have two of my wonderful employees listening today to me, Diane and Chris, so they're, they're listening to their county treasurer. So let's start with the Hamilton County Treasurer's Public Policy on Delinquent Property Taxes. When I came, when I came in on, I believe on about February the twenty-sixth, that after I met shortly with my two deputies and I asked them, what could I do to make a difference? I only have six months. I, I, I want to help homeowners, I want to help businesses, but I didn't know how to quite go about it. And I knew that foreclosure was a very top issue at this time, especially during the pandemic. So from that, we were able to spend our last couple of months here just pulling, putting together the county treasurer's policy. So let's get started if we can and, and anybody want to interrupt and ask a question, it's okay, I don't have a problem with that at all. I tend to talk a little fast, so I'll try to slow down just a little bit. Again, I want to thank you all for the opportunity to work with you and always remember this one thing about me, I work for you. And number one, so everybody needs to know, when we started our public relations campaign or a public awareness campaign to taxpayers, many of these taxpayers did not know that they're entitled to a one-time payment plan for the, uh, delinquent taxpayers according to the Ohio Revised Code. So everybody in Ohio that is behind in their taxes, many times, they don't know this, they really don't know because it's not the county treasurer's job, believe it or not, to send out letters telling people about our payment plans. Our job fundamentally is to collect money and, and we collect here in Hamilton County one point three billion a year and also to invest money, those two major investments and two of the wonderful commissioners serve on the investment committee with me and we have about six hundred and seventy million dollars there. So we do have this one-time payment plan, so we informed, we sent out probably about seven thousand letters, counting everyone to remind, to let them know about this. Number two, as a result, when I met with my two deputies, Glenn and Lottoman, I said, I really need to find out who are the people out here, the homeowners and the businesses that are struggling. I, I need to know because of unemployment, underemployment, people not able to go back to work, for whatever reason, I need to know who these people are. So the team came back and we discovered that there is eighteen hundred homeowners right now in this county on the verge of losing their homes, whether through a possible tax lien or foreclosure. And, and so I indicated to my team, we've got to do something about it and I need to know what can I do as county treasurer within the law. I'll get close to the law as I can, whatever it takes, we cannot allow these eighteen hundred homeowners who are on the verge of losing their homes, we just cannot allow that to happen. Then also we discovered that we had twenty-five hundred, uh, commercial small business homeowners. These were the small businesses, they may even own a four family or eight family or sixteen family or twenty-four family, whatever that could be. So we put together a very comprehensive public awareness initiative which we'll share as we move along. By the way, there are ten modules here so you can see how close we will get to the end. The next is, when you put all of these together, the eighteen hundred and the twenty-five hundred, you got about four thousand three hundred of entities of, of people, homeowners and commercial businesses who right now could, if we do nothing, if we offered them no delinquent plan, payment plan, or you didn't give them COVID funds, they could lose their, their homes and their businesses. So we started a, again, a public awareness initiative. When you take all forty-three hundred of these individuals and put together, that's an outstanding over thirty-two million dollars of money that could go toward the schools, a zoo, our county budget, but also by helping these wonderful people during this time, during this pandemic time, we may end up realizing those, that thirty-two million down the road as we help this, these wonderful people. So what we did here, what am I asking you all to consider today? I, I hope you all will pray about it, consider it. The county treasurer, I'm requesting that eighteen hundred homeowners receive a minimum, now this is a minimum, matter of fact, it may only take five thousand for a few, it may take seven thousand to, to actually clear out their delinquent tax debt, but a minimum of five thousand each toward their delinquent, the, the delinquent tax contracts, we call them contracts, payment plans to prevent foreclosure. So the challenge here today is I'm asking you all to consider, as, matter of fact, I read just recently, Vice President Reese has a wonderful tax reduction program, which I think is wonderful. Anytime you can give people their money back, give them their money back. However, though, as you all consider the tax reduction plan or whatever, that, that you will not forget these wonderful eighteen hundred homeowners. Now I did not include the twenty-five hundred commercial businesses because we're not for sure yet and maybe Mr. Jeff Aluto and others could help us determine if any of that, those funds can be used to help the commercial businesses. Now I, I did do some research, Elise was told to me that ARP funds can be used for, for any hardship subsequent to January twenty-first of twenty-twenty and it does not have to be COVID nineteen related. So if there's a way, this great body can also consider not only the eighteen hundred homeowners, but also the twenty-five hundred commercial businesses, which we are in contact with them now. Also, the city of Cincinnati, let's take a look and, and see those who are on the verge of losing their homes in the city of Cincinnati. Again, I want to thank, I've got two fine deputies here, I tell you, Deputy Glenn and Deputy Lottoman and, and they're just great. And we got to the real nitty gritty on what, what does this look like? Right now we have, in the city of Cincinnati alone, we have a hundred and six homestead individuals, may not sound like a lot, but let me tell you it is. Who are these people? These are the individuals on homestead, they have low income, they're elderly and they're disabled and many of them are veterans. And, and in some cases their homes are paid off, but they have property taxes in some cases that they could end up ultimately losing their home. Who else, owner-occupied, this is the residential group, six hundred and thirty-six of these individuals are on the verge of losing their, their homes. However, some have come in and have been working with our very fine staff that we have here at the county treasurer's office. And then when you put it together right now, a total delinquent homeowners is seven hundred and forty-two. Again, I did not put the businesses or the small businesses or commercial businesses here because we don't know yet legally if we could use A, A, ARP funds yet, but if we can, I hope we would put those numbers back in. If you, so we'll go on to that, so the ARP funds are requested is four point two million. So if the county would consider also the four point two million, if the city did not want to do this, the county, I'm asking the county to also consider here four point two million. I, we put in a management and operation fee, the Community Action Agency and working in neighborhoods, Miss, Sister Barbara Bush, a wonderful, just a wonderful person, I worked with her on Cincinnati City Council, they have agreed that if the county commissioners would consider funding for these foreclosures on homes, that they would definitely work with the county to do so. So we just, for illustrative purposes, we put five hundred thousand in there as a, as possible management fee to manage this. We can't ask the Community Action Agency and working in neighborhoods to do that free. So let's take a look at Hamilton County on the verge of foreclosure. This number, homestead alone, again, these people are the elderly, low income, disabled, veterans and so on and so forth. So we have two hundred here in the county and then owner-occupied in the county, that's on the verge is one, one thousand one hundred and sixty-four. The total delinquent homeowners just for the county alone is one thousand three hundred and sixty, sixty-four. And just think, what could the ARP funds do for them? In many of their cases, it could probably pay off their total delinquency. In some cases, you may have to spread it over two years to five years, I don't know, but that's going, so ARP funds requested here would be just for the county alone would be one point two million. Again, I'm saying a mil, a minimum of five thousand per person, but in some cases, if you didn't have a cap on it, you could probably bring someone's total delinquency bill, say up to seven, seven thousand or ten thousand dollars. Again, we included that in here. So when you, so payment plan results, here are some of the results already. When we started this, again, I'm just so elated and happy that I have such a wonderful staff here that has just really been answering the phones and working with people since we started our public awareness campaign. And here's just a sample of what is, have occurred in helping to prevent foreclosures. This includes businesses and homeowners right now. These are not the new numbers, these are about eight, nine days old, a new property tax agreements. These are individuals, Madam President and members of this fine body that have come to our office, either showed up in person or called us by phone and/or signed agreements with our office out of that number of forty-three hundred. The total amount of delinquency taxpayers entered into agreement, if these wonderful people are able to pay their bills all the way, whether they have one year to pay or year and a half or five years, whatever it is, the, the county will realize seven million dollars of money that we probably would never get if there was a foreclosure at that time. Right now, these individuals, these, let me go back here, three hundred and seventy agreements, these individuals put down eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. That number is going to be much higher as we continue our public awareness campaign, which I'm going to share with you shortly, what we have done to, with our public awareness campaign. Also, module three is a second chance payment. Everybody deserves a second chance and this county treasurer, I'm letting you know, unless somebody, unless the prosecutor's office come or the government, governor tell me not to do it, I'm willing to give a second chance, third chance or fourth chance, whatever it takes in order to help people save their homes, save their businesses. So we have a second chance payment program, which is at my discretion as a county treasurer and, and this is on an ad, ad needed, as needed basis. So I just want you all to know that what's different than what we've done, we actually have a public awareness campaign going on. I think we're the only county in Hamilton County out of eighty-eight county treasurers that have put together a comprehensive plan to not wait for taxpayers to come to us, but we go and find them. So that's module three. Module four is encourage the city and the county to use the American Rescue ARP funds to help delinquent taxpayers. My, Chris today, Chris James delivered, I believe, to everyone, I hope y'all could see this, in, in your, with your white paper, in your, in the envelope, you should see, it's called the Homeowner Assistance Fund Guidance, U.S. Department of Treasure, April the fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. This is the document that says, if you look on one of the pages here, it says that monies can be used, it can be used to assist delin, here it is, it says, payment assistance for delinquent property taxes to prevent homeowner tax foreclosures. At first, when I was working early on with President Dumas, we were not for sure at the time and the county prosecutor's office wasn't for sure, but we're pretty sure now. Matter of fact, I can almost say with a hundred percent certainty, we can use rescue money and I'm going to show you that in one moment. The homeowners assistance, again, the April fourteenth document, the homeowners assistance fund under the American Rescue Plan is what we're talking about here. It says qualified expenses for foreclosure, so let's go, I'm sorry, I went too fast there. So they do qualify, so if I can help, if there's anyone else that would like to refute what I have to say, I sure like to know, but right now, these funds can be used. Let's talk about some more, part of our public awareness campaign is to reach out. I asked Deputy Glenn and Deputy Lottoman to help me, we want to take it further now. We, we looked at tier one homeowners as it relates to foreclosures, we looked at tier two, small businesses and commercials, but now I said, what about some of these mid-sized companies, a medium businesses, a small, larger companies? What about the churches? Let's take a look and try to offer them delinquent tax contracts, let's reach out to them too. So not to penalize anyone, but let's look at them. So we, hopefully here in the next few days, we'll be having a campaign to reach churches and their governments that owe us money, the city of Cincinnati owes us, well, we'll just leave that alone because I may need money from them, so I won't say much right now, but the city of Cincinnati owes us money, the United States government owes us money, the state of Ohio owes us money and, and I would like for them to, I'll put them on a payment plan also and during this pandemic period. But there's four things that they could do. This list here consists of about what these individuals could do, like if it's for churches. We do have several churches on the list, evidently they probably do not know that they have a, a delinquent taxes due or they have not applied for taxes, tax exemption or they need to apply. So we, we have a letter, I'm pretty sure they received that last week. So we have a letter, I'm pretty sure they received that last week, the government. So also, there are some people on this list just need to pay up if they don't want a payment plan. And then we will definitely put individuals on payment plans. And then there's another group there that, a few names are on this list, that just need to clean up some of their legal paperwork. So that, we reached out to them too. So this list is broken down, and those who are one year behind, six point eight million, this group would owe us unless they're tax exempt, or they have other issues that they have to work through. Then we also on this list, we have category B, these are the people that's behind just six months. And then when you put it all together, that's a grand total of sixteen million dollars that would be all, that would eventually, if they're tax exempt, or they want to pay up, or they get on a payment plan with us, that would equal up to sixteen million dollars. We have a total of about forty-eight million dollars right now that citizens, taxpayers would owe us. But however, because of the pandemic, and I want to be sensitive, I want to make sure all of these individuals are aware that we can help them. We can put them on a, now I was told not to say it, but we can put citizens on two-and-a-half to five-year payment plans. So, and then second chances, when I found out about the second chance, I said, oh my God, I definitely go give people a second chance, because you never know in life, I may need one. I may need y'all to help me down the road. So we might as well help as many people as we can. Module six, collaborate and partner and leverage, also leverage federal tax dollars. Actually, again, I want to thank my staff. I tell you, this is a great staff. I wished I could take them with me when I leave, but I would just, I don't know what to do. But they are, they're a great staff, they're wonderful people. And we are now collaborating and partnering. They helped me to reach out over the years, the Community Action Agency, well, really, especially the Legal Aid Society, has been working with our office in one form or another. Sister Barbara Bush has been working with us, working in neighborhoods and the Community Action Agency. So I would like to share right now, dispel, if I can, Madam President, and wonderful members of this body, that we cannot, if anyone says, well, we cannot use money to pay delinquent property tax, well, that's not true. Because right now, some of the three hundred and seventy individuals that have signed agreements with us have received money already from the Community Action Agency, have received money from working in neighborhoods, have received money, some of the CARES money and block grant money from the Legal Aid Society. And they've signed up with tax contracts with our office. So again, I would hope that we work through that legal parameter. One of the other things that we've done, part of our comprehensive white paper and our plan, is to inform banks and savings loans and companies and loan companies. You say, well, why would you want to deal with banks and saving loan companies? Well, because we've discovered in some cases that the banks and these savings loans, these different companies, what they've allowed during the COVID period, they've allowed the customer to pay the principal only. So that means they didn't end up, they did not pay their property taxes or the interest. So we're reaching out here in the next few days to these banks and savings loans and companies, different financial institutions proactively. And we're going to ask them to work with our office, and let's put some of these customers on delinquent property agreements if we can. So that's another part of our initiative. And then, social media outreach. You say, well, how have we been getting the word out? Well, we've been working through social media. I've even learned how to use some of this stuff. Facebook, we're doing Twitter, email, website. To my knowledge, I have not been able to find any money, Madam President, and members of this great body. I haven't found any money to do anything. So all this stuff had to be on a volunteer basis, and I've used my contacts, and we're on our own website. So I had to get other people involved to help promote this initiative. Media and community outreach, I don't know if you have your white paper with you there, and I'm about ready to wrap up. But on the white paper, let's see, number nine. Number nine, here's how we've been able to reach a lot of folk, I mean, literally thousands of people. So remember, we have the eighteen hundred homeowners, that's just one entity by itself. We have twenty-five hundred commercial businesses, that's a whole component by itself. And then we have another group of churches and other businesses, that's a group by itself. But we also have people out there that know that they're not going to be able to pay, and they're going to be delinquent. We don't know, we had to find a way to reach many of them. So we launched a comprehensive media and community outreach support. And if I share with you all, here are some of the free PR we've been getting. I know Vice President Reese is good at this. She used to work with tourism and home business, and a mother-in-law had a great public relations company. So she understands the importance of getting great donated PR, and that's what we were able to get. So we've been on the Lincoln Ware Show, I plan to go back, the Cincinnati issues with Lincoln Ware. The Inquirer has helped us, they're going to be working with me again, hopefully tomorrow. I have a meeting with the editorial board to get them to hopefully endorse what we're doing, to get the word spread. Cincinnati Herald has done a front-page story, Northwest Press, the Cincinnati Business Courier, we want to thank them, Fifty-five A.M., W K R C, Brian Thomas was so impressed with what we were doing, they have now on their website, they're encouraging people to call the Community Action Agency, to call the Legal Aid and win. We also sent out the Winburn Report with all those numbers on there. Also, Lamar Billboard Company donated about thirty thousand dollars worth of billboards. You may have seen some of those up. You probably said, well, I haven't seen one. Well, we tried to put them in areas where there are high delinquencies. So we've been working on it. The Nathan Ivey Show, of course, Michelle Graves, her two inspirational shows, we've been there. Curtis Fuller is getting ready to air a twenty-minute documentation on our comprehensive public policy. Bill Cunningham, we're getting ready to schedule with him this Friday. Saturday, I will be with Mike Allen to promote this on W. The Legal Aid Society has been great. The Greater Cincinnati Northern Kentucky Apartment Association has just been wonderful. And I also wanted to just highlight, if I can, as we recapitulate here, I want to thank Madam President Dumas, just for listening here, to run this by. I want to thank Jan Michelle Kearney, I'm working with her right now. She has our public policy plan. She is trying to see if she could get from the city of Cincinnati to fund this initiative. And I know down, I know the city of Cincinnati, now this is supposed to be funny, but I don't know how I'll get over, but they're playing Santa Claus down there. And I hope if they're giving out money, they won't forget these homeowners, and they won't forget these businesses who could possibly lose their homes or businesses. Also, we want to thank Stephanie Mose with the Legal Aid, and Colleen Swim, and also Attorney Mark Lawson with the Community Action Agency, you all work with him. And by the way, he told me to share with you, we had a Zoom meeting today, and he told me to share with you that if you all would consider funding these eighteen hundred homeowners and/or businesses, if the law will allow, he is open and willing to work with the county to actually implement this initiative. And also, one of the things that Sister Barbara Bush, we want to thank her, Sister Barbara Bush, they also indicated that housing counseling is a real, real concern, especially for the over three hundred homestead individuals. Because we may be able to give them money, but they're going to probably be, need to be put on a monthly initiative. So they may need some housing counseling during that process. So what I'm also recommending, whatever that management fee is for working in neighborhoods or the Community Action Agency, that they receive some of that money, be used for housing, counseling, to help people when that next bill is due, and the COVID money is not there, or the AARP funds is gone, or whatever it may be, or their delinquent agreement is in jeopardy. They need to know some financial planning in that area. And then finally, we want to encourage the County Treasurers Association, which we are a member of. And I just sent them my white paper, and hopefully, they're going to send that out to eighty-eight counties. And you say, well, Winburn, why you want to be concerned about Ohio? Well, if you just look at the numbers, twenty-one percent of Ohioans remain could possibly go into foreclosure this year. So if there's anything that I could do to help and paint a picture, point a direction to help someone, why not help them too? So that's my contribution to the County Treasurers Association. And finally, you could see, according to Urban League Report, between two thousand and five and twenty thirteen, Hamilton County has lost forty-five hundred African-American homeowners, resulting in the lowest rate of, as it relates to homeownership in the nation. That is a problem. So I rest my case. I know you all to be honorable and wonderful people, and you all want what I want, and that's to help improve the quality of life for everyone. And I just wanted to come today and just thank you all, and just all for my little help here in one way or another, to help move us down the road in helping as many people as we can. Just remember one thing, I work for you, and I'm open for any questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Winburn. First of all, I just would like to thank you for coming to me and working together to look at the overview of how you wanted this to work, and working through the process, and then bringing it to all our commissioners. Your report is very extensive, very informative, and this is, you're filling a void that is so much needed with our taxpayers. So you're filling a void and providing, when I say you, the treasurer's office, and providing hope for those who did not have hope before this, and the clarity of whether or not we can do the funds. I'm sure we'll have that in writing, Jeff will get that in writing. We did get the initial guidelines, and I certainly appreciate the information, additional guidance from the treasurer's office, which I'll certainly read through that. And so, we are having a public hearing on Tuesday at six-thirty for anyone who's interested in the AARP program and receiving monies from that. Certainly, this was a very extensive presentation. You don't necessarily have to be a part of that. You only get a couple minutes for that. But if you'd like to, whoever's watching can hear your plea from the treasurer's office, you're certainly welcome to do that. That'll be one of our public hearings. But at this point, I'll open it up for Vice President Reese if she has any comments or questions.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Treasurer Winburn, for the presentation. And, you know, obviously, one of the things that we have to work on, because people are losing their properties as it relates to taxes, and it's a time, we've got COVID, we've just come out of COVID, and a lot of people think, oh, you're out of COVID, people, they're hiring people now. Well, what about those seven and eight weeks and ten weeks of no pay? People have, you know, lost their jobs, some people have to be retrained for new ones. So, you know, there was a lot of money that was lost. And certainly, we just had affordable housing presentation earlier today. And one of the big issues, you know, to be affordable is, you know, we want to help people get in the house. We want to also be able to hold on to it. So what I would just ask, Madam President, this presentation to, you know, as we have asked the, we've asked Jeff, our administration, to look at all things on the table to help people with this tax relief. I introduced a motion to look at what the auditor had also talked about to see if we could look at the property tax rollback, because it's highlighted as a housing fund. And finally, if we could do that, people could finally get the complete rollback that they were mis-told before we were, any of us were here. But certainly, the need is great. We've also asked to look at more aggressively with seniors, because we see a lot of development going on, which gets people, property taxes going up. But the people who live there, they get no abatement, but the new development does get abatement. And so I would just ask that this presentation be directed to our administrator as we have asked him to come back and look at all of these different options on what can be done. And then certainly, we make the final decision. But to look at, here are all the things, here's what can be done as it relates to reducing the tax burden on the homeowners. And then we can make a decision. So I just would ask that this be, I appreciate the presentation, it's a good presentation, but I think sending it to our administrators so they could take a look at it and come back to us, not only on this proposal, but all the proposals that we have for a home reduction of taxes. And then allow us to, you know, as we make our decision, at least we know that this is allowed, that's not allowed, or it can be done, or if we do it this way, this is what it's going to cost, so that we can make a decision as we move forward. But I'm certainly on record that I'm very interested since day one, when I first got elected. And as I've talked to so many people, and I talked to Jeff before we had these funds that are coming now, been asking, what kind of way can we give a break to the homeowner? He's probably tired of me just asking him every single week, can we do this? Can we do that? Can we do this? So now we've got some money, and we now have the rules. And so I would love for, to get the feedback from our administration on what can be done, if anything, in this proposal, and the proposals that have been submitted by myself and others as well.
Thank you. And as you were saying, Vice President Reese, we, as we give our recommendations to Jeff for review, as he'll be presenting those to us, that we make sure, or we ensure that as we submit those recommendations, that this is, this area is inclusive. I did include it in my recommendations, assistance for the delinquent property taxpayer. And so hopefully, we'll all come to that, I don't know, we'll see if we all come to that conclusion. But I did submit it to administration as it relates to that. Commissioner Drehouse.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Commissioner, and good to see you, Treasurer Winburn. Thank you for the presentation. So we, yeah, we've all said that we want to do something for homeowners, what we can do, and how we do it strategically. And I just wanted to drill down on some of your early slides, because, you know, we obviously want to make sure that we are helping those that are in the most need. We did that with our rental assistance program, and I expect we'll be doing it with mortgage assistance or tax assistance as well. So you referenced a few numbers there in the very beginning related to your targets. Can you either provide us with the background information that supports those numbers, or just give us a better understanding of who's on that list? You know, when you arrive at a certain, I don't know if it was eighteen hundred homeowners that you suggest are the ones that would qualify and need the help, how do you arrive at that number? What are the metrics that get you there?
Got you. Well, first of all, let me thank you, Commissioner Drehouse. So what I like to do is have on your desk tomorrow detailed information on zip codes, how they got there, they're a year behind, many of them are a year behind in their taxes. You'll kind of take a look at the commercial, where they're located. So we have the, all that data that we could supply for you. My staff did a great job in pulling that together.
Well, yeah, I am curious, because, you know, with the American Rescue Plan, as we look at how we're going to invest those dollars, and we've got this process, as you've been made aware of, where the administration, I think today, is going to bring forward some recommendations, and we'll have some public hearings. Are you, is what you're referring to, do you anticipate that be a part of the American Rescue Plan? Is that what you're, we're talking about here, or is this separate from that?
Oh, no, this is, although the county- No, this is, although the county treasurer, as you were, we can give out tax delinquent contracts, one by law, as a county treasurer, I'm doing second chance. So we are moving forward. Again, 370 people have already participated in one form or another. So I'm asking that you all would consider this definitely, because these are the people that you're really talking about. Let me say it again. The 1,800 individuals that we've described for you, and I want to get you some data on how, where they live, what, you know, what zip code, you just need to see it. These are the people right now, from a property tax perspective, that could be on the verge, and they are on the verge of losing it all. So I would like to see this as a part of what you all are doing. So this is, this will allow them to put money down on their delinquent. Everybody has to put money down on their delinquent property taxes. And that's where you all would come in at.
Okay, so that you expect that this would fold into the American Rescue Plan?
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
The providers that you talk about too, the CAA and Legal Aid, and those were the same folks that were helping us to roll out the rent assistance. So I think it makes sense that we get their expertise in the room too. So I appreciate that you've already done a lot of that outreach. I just wasn't clear if this was the same thing, or if this was a different thing. And I would just, so, yeah, if you could provide that background information, I would be interested in that. And knowing how you arrive at the dollar amount, that's the target, because I don't have any sense of what that dollar amount should be for mortgage or homeowner assistance. So I think that information might be useful.
Yeah, well, first of all, first of all, thank you very kindly for the standpoint of the dollar amount. The dollar amount I was trying to work through, looking at the stimulus check, you know, a family getting $2,400, you know, then we said, well, let's, maybe we should double. That's how I kind of arrived at the $5,000. So I don't have data in that area. We, I don't think we should put a cap on it, per se. And we just had a meeting with WIN and CAA and Legal Aid, and we just felt that that number, it depends on each case that we have on the amount of money. So somebody will say $30,000, you know, $5,000 can go a long way. So we had to start somewhere with a certain amount. But I think having caps on it would not be the best way to do it.
Okay. Well, you, you're gonna potentially then help fewer people if there's no cap, but that's something to consider. Yeah, I just was wondering about the dollar amount and the number that arrived at, and just if you could provide that data, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, and first of all, you raise great, this is wonderful what you're raising. What I was looking at, a minimum amount. So if you just had a minimum amount of $5,000, but you may have someone that all they owe to clear up everything is 3,000. You may have, so that is going to be determined by, you would have set the criteria with Community Action Agency, Legal Aid, and CAA. I don't think, we wouldn't want to, as a county treasurer, be in the weeds on that, but we will be available to work with them to work through all of that.
Okay. Thank you.
One other thing that you did mention, Commissioner, that I wanted to say, I wanted to at least be on record for this. I support a property tax rollback. Now, watch what I'm saying, though. I don't need anybody to give me $36. I don't need it. That money could go and get, help these 1,800 people. And if we could help the 2,500 businesses that are out there too, that need funding, that will be great. So, but I do want to be on record, I do support property tax rollback, but it's not going to help these 1,800 people right now. You give them $36 or $80 or $100, it's not going to help them. So I want to be real clear that this honorable body understand that, you know, that I'm looking for, hopefully, consideration helping these 1,800 homeowners to have money to assist them to put down on their delinquent payment plans is pretty much where I'm at. But I want to be on record, I do support property tax rollback, but it's not going to help these 1,800 people if you gave every one of them a rollback. It definitely not going to help them save their homes, and that's where I'm at. And I want to assure this wonderful body that you have my assurance and confidence and certainty that I'm going to keep working this plan, whether we get one dime or not, for what we're doing. We at least got to put these people on a plan, and already they have demonstrated of almost putting $900,000 of money down on their own. And in many of those cases, without any CARES money or block grant money. So I want to help the 1,800. If you all would kindly consider integrating that. I'll just get you at least whatever data we got to help you, Commissioner Denise Drehouse.
Just want to make sure you're being strategic. So, thank you. I appreciate it.
You're doing a great job. Wonderful. I appreciate it.
And thank you so much. The rollback is a whole nother discussion. I think, I think when I first came here, Commissioner Drehouse, or maybe a year after that, there was a very thorough look into the rollback, and whether or not at the levels that were promised, if we were able to go to those levels. So I won't even, I won't even bring it up. So, but there was a very thorough discussion on that and what it would look like for the county. And maybe we can talk about it at a later date. I see Jeff has unmuted. He wanted to say a few things. Jeff?
Madam President, well, just a couple of things. So as the board is aware, we are currently in the process of, we're going to be getting the board a recommendation on a concept plan for use of the American Rescue Plan dollars here very shortly. And in so doing, we're still in the process of digesting the 150 pages of Treasury guidance that came last Monday, which was then followed up by some additional frequently asked questions. There's been, as the board knows, the board's been on some of these. There's, and we're now starting into the season where there will be webinar after webinar Treasury officials trying to answer questions about what the guidance means, what the law means. A couple of points related to this, because I think there is going to be a lot of, I think there's going to be a lot of questions asked about the issue of tax reductions and tax offsets and clearing of delinquencies, et cetera. But a couple of points just right off the bat. The American Rescue Plan, you know, and we all call it, I typically call it something, I typically call it the American, I'm always calling it the American Recovery Plan. But the American Rescue Plan, as we all know it, is really a broad law that is divided into a multitude of different programs. And each of those different programs has different rules and regulations and guidance associated with it. The dollars that the county is receiving is specifically from the state and local fiscal recovery fund. So we call it the ARP, because we don't want to call it the SLFRF, or whatever it would be. But that comes with its own very specific rules, which may or may not be different from the program that Treasurer Winburn is discussing, which is the Homeowner Assistance Fund, which was a separate program under the ARP, which is $9.96 billion provided to states, directly to states, tribes, and tribal entities. Did not come directly to local governments. So the reason I bring that up is because in the, we know that a matter of clarification that is being highly sought by Treasury is some language in the state and local government fiscal recovery fund, which is the money we have, which specifically states that dollars cannot be used to directly or indirectly offset a reduction of tax revenue or tax decreases, et cetera. Now, does that include the waiving of delinquencies? Does it, is it specific to certain bodies of government, like state government can't use it for that, but locals can? A whole host of unknown questions on that. So I raised that not to try to minimize our ability to potentially move forward on some sort of homeowner assistance program, but that before the administration could recommend something directly, like we're talking about, I think we're going to need a lot more clarification from Treasury on this. So I, given the fact that we're getting ready to roll out with something, we're getting ready to go into public hearings, I think we'd be wise to keep this matter, because it is an extremely important matter when we're talking about potential delinquencies of homeowners, et cetera. I think we should keep this matter in a place where we are looking at it and looking at it in the context of Treasury guidance that will be refined and clarified over the coming weeks. So I just wanted to make that qualification, that I think that what we're talking about is obviously an extremely important and valuable thing in terms of helping homeowners with delinquencies. But I just want to make sure as well that as the administration comes forward, the initial concept plan that we provide likely will not include something like this until we have the ability to get more clarification and guidance from Treasury. So I just wanted to make that clear as we move forward.
Madam President?
Yes.
I just wanted to add to that. I think that, and I appreciate that clarification. And a lot of times when we are dealing with issues, maybe they were dealt with, you know, some years ago, before we had COVID, before we had, you know, if you would have told us, I don't know, a couple of years ago, that the federal government would be giving the county or counties money, a CARES Act. We just said a couple of years ago that two or plus stimulus checks would be coming to people's homes, no matter who they are. And I had some people say, oh, it's that $600. Some people needed that $600. And if you would have told me that we'd had a second round, you know, that, you know, we would have this rescue plan, which I know is a little bit different and effusion. So some things that we visited before that may was undoable certainly need another look, or warrant another look now. And I just would hope that, the one thing I wanted to say, Jeff, that's very important, is that there are people who are holding on barely. And, you know, and so there is a sense of urgency for people and their homes. We just saw a presentation, and these things are not in silos. We just saw a presentation that said all these addicts, a lot of out of town investment people are coming in and buying up Hamilton County. They're buying up neighborhoods. They're buying up communities. They're not from here. They're jumping with the rent so high, they're throwing out, you know, the people who own the homes are getting thrown out because they can get their houses off of these foreclosure. The dynamics of our land ownership is going to drastically change unless we can help people stay and fight to stay in their homes and own their property. So I would just say that this is a top priority. You know, when I'm running, that's all, you go out in these other county areas, that's all they talk about, honestly, was, you know, we got to keep these taxes down. I want to stay in my house. And what I want, if it can't be done, whatever it is on the taxes, if the rollback can't be done, if $500 back to the people can't be done from a rollback, I want it in writing so I could go out and say, hey, they looked at it, and legally, this is what they told me. It cannot be done versus, you know, I'm told something, and then I got to run out and say, well, no, it can't be done. No, I need to see it in writing. Then the next person come, and I was like, well, we can look into it, maybe we can do it, maybe we can't. So I just want to put that out there that aggressively, let's look at everything, and then if it can't be done, give it to me in writing, that we did look at it. And let me hold up this paper. This is what they say, it cannot be done. So, you know, I just wanted to put that on the table, that this home piece, we doing good with rental, but the home piece is a problem, and it will continue to force us to have a problem of home affordability if we don't somehow stabilize people where they can stay in their, in their houses. And, you know, Jeff, you helped me on, I had a lady seeing citizens, she says she never missed taxes, and they researched it before you got here, Treasurer Winburn. The last treasurer, Goran, he looked at it, she had never missed, and she was shaking her hand, couldn't hardly write, and she said, just help me stay in the home. Now I was able to get it to Jeff, your administration, they were able to get it to the treasurer, and she's, on this, she gave us stay in her house, plus they found another program she qualified for that she wasn't even aware of, because she had never had to look for help. So just want to put that out there in terms of the mindset. I know that these things are complicated, but I want it to stay at the forefront, if possible, and be able to get something back to us in writing and publicly. So if it can't be done, every homeowner, taxpayer in Hamilton County heard it, and it's not just us individually telling them that this can't happen.
Yeah, Madam President and Madam Vice President. Yeah, no, I completely agree. And we're, I guess the purpose of my comment was to make sure that as we, as we roll forward with something, as the administration comes forward with something, if this element of it is not in there, that the board understands is because we're awaiting guidance, what we expect to be clarification and guidance from Treasury. But as I said, absolutely happy to keep this front and set, the entire issue of homeowner protection, delinquency, clearances, et cetera, on the center of the radar, work with the Treasurer's Office and Treasurer Winburn and his staff to make sure that we're doing that, so that we find some ways to move forward on this. So appreciate the comments. And I just wanted to make sure that the board understood as you get the concept plan from the administration, that we're not to the point yet where I feel we've got the clarity on this particular program. Doesn't mean that we can't and shouldn't keep looking for, as you said, Madam Vice President, some creative ways to get at the same goal.
Thank you, Madam President, and that helps me too, to make sure we don't allocate all the dollars, keeping some to the side until we can, you know, because I don't want to say we out of money. So that helps me too, in my thinking and voting, to make sure that we don't allocate all of the funds in the first round.
Absolutely. And I think it's very clear from the other two colleagues that we are not just going to accept hearing that we can't do it, that we definitely have to have something in writing, because it's so on the forefront of our minds, the necessity of making it happen. So, and I'm sure we'll get that from Jeff as soon as he gets it, and hopefully quicker later, quicker later than sooner, sooner than later. Because we know people are waiting, thank you, waiting for that, anxiously waiting for some relief. And as I said, some hope.
Can I offer one other? Yeah, just one other. So when we talk about relief for homeowners, you know, it's not only a mortgage payment, it's also utilities. And Commissioner, we've talked about MSD and whether or not we can do that. And now we're talking about the links to taxes. So there are different ways to skin the cat here. And so I think if one road doesn't work because the guidance doesn't allow it, then we look down another road, you know. And so I think, I think we've all asked the administration to look creatively at how we can provide some relief for homeowners. It's just a matter of what form it takes and what's allowable. And I think we all share the same frustration that some of our ideas might not be allowable, but maybe there are other ideas that are. So I think maybe through our public hearings, we'll also gain some knowledge as to what the homeowners are thinking, and, you know, what they view assistance to look like. So not to put a wet blanket on anything, Treasurer Winburn, but it's complicated because the language references taxes. And so it's just, you know, it's just complicated for us. So appreciate, again, but I'm hopeful, and I think the administration is, taking a look at kind of different, different ways to get to the same thing.
Right. And it just goes back to what we were saying, and both of you have said, if we can't use the new money, and we're, you know, have the convenience of having this new money to use in other areas, then use the old money that we have, that we would normally have had to spend if we didn't get the ARP money. So, yeah, I think there's a way to do it, and we'll see how we're able to make that happen. Okay.
Madam President?
Yes.
I just had a final comment.
Absolutely.
Appreciate all the commissioners and your comments. One of the things I agree with Vice President all, is that there are some people that are barely holding on, and these 1,800 that I just shared with you, they're barely holding on. And many of them are behind in their taxes, eight, nine months, a year, so they're barely holding on. Now, I'm going to suggest this as your als county treasurer for y'all to think about. Maybe you could, since you're getting your first round of money, maybe you could set aside a comprehensive property tax plan that would include the rollback as well as the 1,800. I think that could be the wisdom of Solomon, is whereby on one end, taxpayers are getting some money back. Again, I don't know what that would be for me, $20, $30, $40, which I don't need one, but anytime we can give taxpayers their money back, I guess I'll take it in the meantime. However, if we can help the 1,800 that are barely holding on, I think that would be my concern today. And if there's a way, Commissioner Dreehouse, and which I'm hopeful that we can help businesses too, if there's a way. I hope y'all don't think I'm sounding greedy by just pushing everybody on the county commissioners, but these small businesses, when you get my, each one of you all get the zip codes in the neighborhoods where these people live, I think you'll get a better feel if there's any way, Mr. Jeff Aludo, that you could find in that 150-page document, how we can help these small businesses. That would be, to save their property would be huge. So, again, the wisdom of Solomon, if y'all find a way to split the baby and do a rollback and help the 1,800, I think I can leave all of here knowing that we've given it our very best. And I want to thank you, Madam President, thank you, Commissioner Denis Dreehouse, thank you, Vice President Alicia Reese, and you, Mr. Jeff Aludo, for just the wonderful work that you all do.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. And of course, you'll be hearing back from us, and I'm sure we'll be hearing from you also, from the information that was requested. Thank you so much for your work.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, we'll move forward to item four. We've already been talking about it a bit, American Rescue Plan stakeholder process update and board discussion. Jeff?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President, and not a whole lot to add today, other than just to say that we are in the final stages of drafting a recommended concept plan for the board, and we plan to get that to you very shortly here. I don't think, at the end of the day, and we've just been kind of talking about it, I don't think that the plan is going to contain a whole lot of surprises for the board. We've been talking about policy direction on this for the past month or so. And we've conducted multiple stakeholder meetings, we briefed the board on those stakeholder meetings, we've had a couple of staff meetings designed to receive board policy guidance. We've talked about everything from affordable housing to workforce development, childcare, broadband enhancement in the community, youth programming, health disparities in communities that have been disproportionately impacted. So I think the board is generally familiar with the main concepts, and I think is aligned around some of the main concepts that you'll see coming back to you in a recommended plan, as well as some, some more, what I'd call distinct projects, that I think there is general alignment of the board, where there's general alignment of the board as well. So just a couple of things on logistics. We really thought long and hard about how to go about presenting this to you. So you're going to get a table that is a summary of the, of the concept recommendations, that will be followed with a narrative that will give you some textual description as to what we are proposing. We really thought about whether to break this into a spending plan over a period of years, and at the end of the day, thought that, just as we were talking just moments ago about changes in situations that may happen, additional guidance that may be received from Treasury, et cetera, we decided that even though we're getting these dollars in two tranches, that we're just going to provide the board with an overall recommendation on the entire amount. We are, as we're in the final stages here, into what the board had just discussed, we are attempting to leave some level of reserve in that calculation as well, either for just allocation, reallocation by the board based upon public hearings and comments like what Treasurer Windburn just provided, or just as a reserve to carry into the future as well. So I know, Madam President, your office has been working with the other offices and trying to coordinate some times that work for public hearings as well. So I know we're looking to go into public hearings next week, and certainly happy to discuss any of this more with the board. If there's any questions, happy to answer questions as well.
Thank you, Jeff. Just one question, as you introduced the concept that you are going to present to us, and the thought that not to add the financial allocation. And I'm just wondering, and I heard you say you want to keep some reserve, but if I looked at the concept and you said, I don't know, $5 million for youth program. I think if we put the numbers in too late, that that really thorough discussion may not happen. I think we need to come to some agreement on the amount that the administration is recommending should go toward.
Just to be clear, so as we have these different areas, whether it's housing, workforce development, mental health, you need, the administration absolutely will have a recommendation on all of those. So what, the information that you get will include those program descriptions with a dollar amount recommendation. What we will not have done at this point in time is talk directly about how to go about administering that program, the programs yet, because we are talking concept here. So for instance, there will be a recommendation, hypothetically, there would be a recommendation around workforce development, and we'll provide a general recommendation to the board around the issue of workforce development, but we won't go so far as to list individual agencies and programs, et cetera. It'll be a higher level discussion at this point in time, recognizing that we really want to hear from the board and from the public as to how we go about building that program out, so it's most impactful for the community. So I hope, I'm sorry if I was confusing on
Yeah, because I wrote down financially, we're not going to put in the financial aspect, so.
Okay.
I heard it wrong, if you clarify.
Sorry if I misspoke, but no, I think we'd be selling you short if we didn't give you some numbers with it as well.
Very good, thank you. Vice President Reese, any comments as it relates to how that's going to roll out for us?
No, I think, I think I'm fine with being able to read that, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Dreehouse?
I'm looking forward to it.
Okay, I am too. Okay, thank you very much. Is there anything else to come before the commission? Okay, hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.